Call meeting, the order asked the court to call the roll.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Marshburn.
Present.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton.
I will now call on Councilmember Buck Kennedy. Lead us in the pledge of allegiance, followed by identification. Please rise.
All rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
If you would please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, for the coming of spring, the gift of new life, and its potential for the gift of eternal life. We invoke your presence here tonight as we try to address the issues that are facing the citizens of Garner. We have plenty of folks in our community that need your comforting hand, that need your healing hand, that need to know that you are with them during the dark times. We ask your safety hand and shield over those that work to protect us, both here and abroad. Guide us and direct us, give us insight and understanding that the decisions we make may be beneficial to the town and its citizens. For Christ's sake, we ask it. Amen.
Thank you, Buck. Next on the agenda is petitions and comments. That's time on the agenda for anyone, anyone to address the council. On items not on the agenda tonight, if you wish to address the council, come to the podium, state your name and address. Page nine, we'll go to the adoption.
You may have a couple, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Hello. Hello. My name is Rodney Stratton. I live here in Garner, 506 Longview Street. I would like to know the people where I live behind me, which is a creek, and the engineers, surveyors have been there and they mapped it off. I'd like to know what they're building there. Looks like a large project. Thank you.
Anyone want to address that?
Is that 506 Longview?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, we might need to follow up with you. I'm not sure, and it looks like none of the staff is sure what that is. So if you can leave your contact information with one of the assistant managers, we'll be sure to get back in contact with you tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ms. Twitty.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity for us to speak to you tonight. I am here with several of my friends representing some friends of downtown Garner out here. You can see our T-shirts. We are so just grateful for the sense of community that's in Garner and really excited about the exciting new things coming on Main Street, and one of those is a new business. So we're really just here to show our support, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, next is the adoption on the agenda. Mr. Mayor, if the council and the mayor will agree, I want to add a closed session to the agenda in regards to a personnel matter. No.
I'll have maybe one that I would need to add for the same reason. Might be two different issues. The one citation will cover it.
All right.
And I would like to add a presentation, Mr. Mayor, at the beginning of the meeting to show a brief video.
With those amendments, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the agenda. Motion made, second. To approve, attend all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
You need to dial now, Rodney?
Yes, we're at presentation.
All right.
Rick's gonna come up and cue a video and probably give us an intro to what we're about to see.
Yeah, so I'm also here to show my support for downtown Garner, although I do not have my T-shirt. If you've driven down Main Street or Garner Road traveling eastbound, I guess in the past couple of months, you've probably seen a spectacular site, a new mural that's on the wall facing the rec center site, on the wall of the Full Bloom Coffee and Craft Cafe wall there. It was done by a Raleigh mural artist named Shawn Kurnick with the support of DGA, United Arts Council of Raleigh and Wake County, Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Department, and then also, of course, Full Bloom and Patrick Byrd. So we had a chance to interview the artist recently, and we put together a quick video, runtime's about three minutes. We thought we'd show it. It's gotten a lot of good traction on Facebook, not only on our page, but Visit Raleigh has put it on their page and even put some money behind it to get more views. It's gotten a total of about 30,000 views on those two pages combined. So as we think about public art, the value of public art, this is a great example of how it can raise our profile regionally and create a new destination. So let's see if we can cue this video up, have a look at it. It is again about three minutes.
Murals are unique in the sense that it provides an opportunity to tell stories from a few different perspectives. You have the perspective of the business here and the kind of story that they have, the town that it's placed in, and then the narrative that I'm able to bundle together with all of it together and kind of, you know, put together that everybody's gonna like, you know?
Debbie Dunn, the director at the Garner Performing Arts Center, was approached by United Arts Council. They were interested in bringing a mural to Garner, it's one of the last towns in Wake County that they haven't done a mural in, so they were really excited to work with us. And Debbie thought that that would be a great project for us to do in downtown, particularly because we have an economic development strategy focused on bringing cultural arts to downtown Garner.
So the general theme of this was about kind of life in bloom, right? That there is this, and the compositional direction of everything is in an upward onward motion, right? So there's this energy of moving upward and onward. I wanted to include some, all of the plants and all of the wildlife are all local to the area. It's all about new life, expanding life, and the kind of the exciting part of growth and blossoming in general. The old caboose is mixed in here also, and so I actually took the top half there and there's a bottom half there, and I kind of like sliced it and opened it so that you have this heritage of the area here that is not gone, but is just purely opening up to new possibilities.
Shawn really has a nice, interesting graffiti type style that we thought would be a good match for downtown, the more urban setting.
That balance between chaos and order, that's another part of this particular composition I really liked, and actually doing this kind of shifted my work into a different kind of direction where I was trying to find more of a balance between chaos and order and make sure that they were kind of having this interaction, you know, that there are certain things, like the design elements of the train tracks, or like the motion that feels like there's an order, but it's also like there's layers on top of layers and things are kind of flying off and exploding in certain areas and other ones are just kind of shooting straight on. But that's how growth occurs and that's kind of where beauty lives, is in that mix of it all.
So, and again, to our viewing audience out there, just we'd like to encourage them to, if they haven't been downtown yet, to have a look at that, you know, go take a look. It's right there at Full Bloom Coffee and Craft and near the rec center site, and it really adds a new dimension to our downtown, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anyone else? They recovered adoption on the agenda. You're asking for a motion on the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I move approval of consent agenda. Motion made, second. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. UTO 190 Art nightclub, Jeff Trezenberg. Open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just continue right along here with our downtown theme and focus. This is the second of a couple of amendments that we have considered recently in the downtown area, all focused around that statement in the Garner Forward Plan about fostering downtown's reputation as a destination for local flavor and flair in Garner. We went over some of this at the work session, but just for the benefit of the audience, I'll kind of just give a quick summary of how we came to this text amendment and why the request has been asked for. Our ordinance currently has a very sharp definition between what qualifies as a restaurant and what qualifies as a bar, and there's really nothing in the middle. You're either one or the other. Some of the challenges that are faced in the downtown area is the size of the buildings and the ability of how much food preparation space you can actually incorporate into these buildings just due to the limited square footage. And in order to be classified as a restaurant, which a restaurant would be permitted currently downtown, either the majority of the square footage or a majority of the sales revenue has to be from that dining option. There's many restaurants that serve alcohol, but it's still, when you're a restaurant, it's either a minority of the space or a minority of the revenue that comes in. So that's part of the challenge here in that you can't really make a majority of the square footage meet the restaurant requirement. And admittedly, when you're wanting to do something that's a little more sports oriented, you probably do have a higher percentage of your sales that will come from alcohol, and so that makes that difficult to achieve as well. So if you're not a restaurant, by default, then you have to be a bar. So either we could come up with, try to come up with, a new definition of a use that splits the middle somewhere, or we could take a look at just how we classify bars within the central business district zoning. So currently, bars are allowed in community retail and service business, which are both kind of commercial oriented zones, as a special use permit. They're permitted just with standards by staff review in both I-1 and I-2, which are our industrial districts. So CBD, Central Business District, has some of those commonalities with community retail and service business, but it's specifically oriented to the historic part of downtown. So from that perspective, it seems to make sense to go ahead and include it as a use. And since it's a special use in community retail and service business, we figured we would suggest then treating it as a special use permit in CBD. So that means that any time one of these uses comes in for a request, it then would come to both Planning Commission and the Town Council for final approval. So it can't just be a staff, a staff level decision. However, when we dug into the way the ordinance is currently written, the only part that exists today is what you see here in the white areas and what's been struck through is actually still in the proposal. We just moved it to item A. But that item means that you can't locate a bar within 500 feet of a residential use or residential district. In the more suburban areas of town, that's not really difficult because your districts are much larger geographically, so you can find an area within those zones that meets that requirement. Even though it's very small, the Central Business District is more of that urban feel. You've got residences in close proximity to commercial already, so that was going to be a difficult one to keep in the ordinance. Given though the close proximity and the history of that proximity over time, I think we can still work with that without it being objectionable to those that live in the vicinity. So again, we kept item A as the original text governing bars in those previously permitted zoning districts, and then we've proposed items B through D specifically to address bars in the Central Business District. So the first one is a condition is that we, something we carried over from other text amendments that we've done in the past, and that is to limit the location of a bar to any parcel that has frontage on Main Street between Montague and Griffin. So you see those parcels here outlined in yellow. So those are the only parcels in the area to which a bar could apply to be located. So this pretty well keeps it to the historic two blocks of downtown with the original commercial buildings, and it also adds in the pad adjacent to the rec center. The second condition is that you do have to have at least 250 square feet of the floor area. This would be controlled at the time they come in for their permit. We would ask them for a layout of the building and showing their footprint and how the building layout will be structured. So we'll be looking for 250 square feet devoted to food preparation, which include kitchen, food refrigeration, freezers, anything devoted to that. And then finally, we do think it's important, we do establish kind of a cutoff time. There's been some debate about what's the appropriate time. What we're trying to do is to avoid for any of those things where there might be a sports event that starts at nine or 10 o'clock at night, that we're not having to deal with those kind of things on a case-by-case, special event type permit review. So at this point, we have proposed 1:00 AM as the cutoff, and so those are the three conditions that we have. I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you have, and I know that there's some folks here that would like to speak on behalf of the amendment as well.
Thank you. Questions? Jeff, could you put back up the schematic that shows the depiction of the downtown? I just wanted you to, or the green areas before we get to residential? Where's the closest residence to this proposed area?
Right. So the current text reads either a house, an existing house, or a zoning district. So the closest ones are going to be back here on Purvis Street, which these parcels here, we currently have an amendment package in to convert these to Central Business District. And then the other one would, the next closest would be these two parcels over here on Griffin Street.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone wish to speak? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing and refer this to the Planning Commission.
You're looking for a decision tonight, are you not?
No, this would just be to refer to Planning Commission, but I didn't know if there were some folks here in the audience who wanted to speak, but...
Well, I'm Josh Whitaker. I'm the applicant. I spoke last time.
State your name and address.
Josh Whitaker, 2028 Simkins Road, Raleigh, 27603.
Thank you.
But if there's no opposition or any questions, I didn't want to take up any of your time, so that's all I was here for.
I'm asking the audience, is there anybody?
I've got a question, though, not of Josh, but of the staff. Are there any height restrictions on, or, this is gonna come up later on, but on this one, are there, are there any related height restrictions on buildings in the downtown area? What if somebody wanted to make improvements to a building?
So I think there is, or is there not, in CBD? So CBD, I guess, is one of those where we don't have a specified height limitation.
Good.
So...
That's all I need to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Thanks.
Thank you, Josh. Let's try it again. Close the public hearing. Send this to the Planning Commission. Next is new and old business, resoning Z-1805 Carroll Property, Purvis Street, Het Patel.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council members. My name is Het Patel, senior planner for transportation on land use. Here to present the general use rezoning for Carroll Property, Purvis Street. So I've shortened this presentation because this is the second time you guys are seeing this. If we need to go back to the old presentation, I also have it available to pull up if we need to. Case in front of you today is Z-1805. The applicant and owner is Lee F. Carroll. Property in question is located at 109 Purvis Street and 111 Purvis Street. It's altogether a .93 acre tract. We had a public hearing on this in December 18th, and Planning Commission reviewed this case at their February 18th meeting. The existing zoning for the two parcels is single-family residential, R9. The requested zoning is Central Business District. The adjacent zoning to the south, we would have R9 and then Central Business District all around it. The Garner Forward Land Use Map designation for this site, for future land use map, is Town Center, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning. I will just quickly go into some of the zoning analysis that we completed before the Planning Commission to talk about the staff recommendations. So here is the highlight of all the uses that are allowed in the Central Business District. Because this is a general use rezoning, any of these uses would be allowed. Wherever you see a parentheses SUP, a special use permit would be required, so those cases would need a special use permit. As I mentioned, in regards to the Garner Forward Comp Plan, the site is designated as Town Center, which is intended for both traditional downtown core and other concentrations of development near transit stop, established garment uses, and other diverse mixed-use locations within the town. We did another analysis just to take a look at potential development buffer requirements because of the CBD zoning next to an R9. So at the time of a site plan, whenever that comes in, we would take a look at the two uses that are being proposed. So whatever's proposed on the site to a single family, depending on the intensity of what is proposed for this site, it could be a 55-foot buffer or a 25-foot buffer. And that's highlighted there in the light yellow and the dark yellow that you see. So that southern parcel that's identified, there's a good chance that that would be used as most of the perimeter buffer. In regards to the zoning consistency statement, as I mentioned, the property seeks to rezone from R9 to Central Business District, which is consistent with the Garner Forward Comp Plan's future land use designation of Town Center. It is also consistent with the guiding principles of building on and conserving the existing character, as well as the commercial development sections of the comp plan, and the following practices and policies which were identified in the comp plan. They were highlighted in your staff report as well. So additionally, the requested rezoning is consistent with the predominant zoning in the area along Purvis Street and West Main Street, and would allow types of businesses at the described location that would enhance town's economic development. Therefore, staff's recommendation is highlighted on the motion worksheet on page 33 of your packets. I'm available to answer any questions, as well as the applicant is also here if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Page nine, I'll call for action on ordinance 2019-3953.
Mr. Mayor, move that the Town Council accept staff statements regarding zoning consistency with the Comprehensive Growth Plan that's detailed in section four of the staff report. Make that as our own, and I therefore move further that the council adopt, council adopt ordinance number 2019-3953 approving rezoning request Z-18-05, as it is reasonable and in the public interest because it'll likely market a healthy brand that celebrates the local flair of Garner and emphasize the town's positive evolution, encourage redevelopment and reuse of existing sites and buildings that are complementary to the surrounding area, and ensure that existing regulations allow new kinds of hybrid office, retail, industrial, or even housing combinations in commercial areas of the town.
Second. Motion, and second. Further discussion. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, thank you. Forrest Jones, recycling cost.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Give me just a sec here. So...
You made a bunch of... You made a bunch of lead.
Well, I'm sorry. That was not my intent.
Give me that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We're here to talk this evening to you about some recent developments we've seen in our recycling costs this evening. So a couple of things we'll be doing. We'll kind of give you a little backdrop on how we got here, talk with a little bit about the process we've gone through thus far, and then at the end of the evening, we'll be looking some guidance from you on how to proceed from here. So back in, and also Tommy Sims with All-Star Waste is here to answer any questions you may have for him as well. So back in January, All-Star came to the town and spoke to us and mentioned, shared with us that they had seen a significant impact in their recycling cost to get, to take it to a recycling center. For many years, they had been able to get at that at little to no cost. Some years, they had received some pay for it, some years they had not, and that's kind of balanced out over the year, over the period of the time we've been dealing with All-Star Waste for the past nine and a half years. In recent months, and I think this really began in January, we saw a spike in that quite significantly. It went from $0 to around $36 a ton to dispose of that. So as you can imagine, All-Star kind of came to us and a little bit of looking some help. You asked why the change in the, in the, what the drastic change. One of the big pieces is, and there's a number of contributing factors, but the one we'll address a little bit this evening, is the demand has decreased. China has, used to be a large buyer of recyclable commodities here in the states. They have refined their processes and just need less of our material than they once did. So that has certainly caused the market to make some changes. I can tell you, this is not a unique piece to Garner. This has been something that we have seen across the county. I attend part of a regular group that meets about quarterly with municipalities across the county, and this has been something that's been on their radars now for a couple of years, and it varied on where you were in your contract with your recyclable place you were doing business with, your stream, how clean it was, a number of things like that. We've been able to avoid that and push that on out primarily because of All-Star's ability to work the market a little bit between the two primary folks in the area where you can take your materials, and that is Sunoco and Waste Management. So we, that's kind of what's allowed us to delay this. As we said, demand is decreased, but yet the supplier... As we said, demand has decreased, but yet the supply remains the same. I think, you know, we're seeing a lot of things, grants and other pushes, recycling at home, education in our schools, as well as the state's working now trying to promote people to recycle away from home. So supply may be even on the rise. Talk a little bit about our history in recycling. We mentioned this earlier. Over the past nine and a half years, All-Star has made a few dollars a ton, and some years they've been able to pay some. This has typically ranged around the $5 threshold. So, and we said earlier this year, that cost really took a sharp increase, and we'll see that in just a moment. Currently, Garner recycles about 135, 140 tons a month. So when you think about that in the $5 range, you're looking at that $700 to $800 price range, and that's why I say All-Star has been, has absorbed that cost and also has reaped that reward in years where there has been that. This is just a picture of the last 36 months of our recycling history. As you can see there, we're a few years at the very early onset in this area, find this mouse here. Where'd I go way down? The very early onset that they were, were broadly in the negative, and we were paying some. We hit a bump in the market there where we were receiving some, where I say we, All-Star. And then down here, the last two or three months, that price has really changed quite a bit. So once Tommy talked, brought this to us in January, you know, the next thing we do, this is a contracted service, so we kind of went back and said, let's take a look at our contract and see what kind of provisions exist in our contract and how can we deal with this. So this is some language that is pulled from our contractor, our contract with All-Star, and here it says, "The contractor may petition the town at any time for additional rate adjustment at reasonable times on the basis of unusual changes in its cost of operations." And these are a sampling of things that were pulled directly from that list that were called out, revised laws, ordinances, changes in disposal charges, and then other major factors beyond our control by the contractor. And the town, we feel that this applies to both items three and four. In short, that's the bulk of what we have. I'll be happy to entertain any questions before we move on with any recommendations you may have for us to move forward.
Forrest, um, I'm looking at your chart over here and, of course, reading from left to right. Do I understand correctly that, notwithstanding the decreasing costs, that there's been a significant spike in recent...
That is correct. In January, when Tommy entered, All-Star Waste entered into a new contract with Waste Management as the primary user of his materials for around $36.10 a ton. Oddly enough, this is one of those pieces that the market, that's just the base kind of rate of where it is, and it really follows what the market is. They're providing us a breakdown on a monthly basis of what we take to them and the type of materials we take. So they look at what's our contamination rate, and they kind of do a breakout, do on a sample load that shows you how much aluminum we bring in, how much glass, how much cardboard, how much paper, and those things. So thus far, All-Star has provided us some kind of mock invoices for this on a surcharge basis. I don't, just as some sampling, we believe this cost would run probably in the neighborhood of around $4,000 to $5,000 a month if we stay true to our averages. The market stays around that $36 a ton unit cost price.
Is it as simple as All-Star providing Public Works, the town that is, with a monthly statement, an invoice with attachments of whatever kind of tickets or payment requests that are, that are made by the, by the, the ones, by the recycler?
That is correct. And we've done that, and I think both of those bills have been, there've been some variation, and one was a little over $3,000, and the other one was right around $5. So we're looking at roughly a $60,000 increase in our recycling contract over a year's basis.
That the way you plan to handle it, looking ahead to the new budget?
That, that is what we're working through right now. Like I say, we just learned of this just in advance when we're making our budget processes, and we would incorporate that if the council desired us to move forward with that recommendation of paying this charge as long as it exists. We hope that this is a spike, and we'll get some relief at some point. I can tell you, back the group we talked with in the county that I'm a part of, we're trying to do some things collectively to help lower that and reduce that, and that's kind of really streamlined, cleaning up our list of items that we recycle, looking at really what those recycling centers want and curtailing what we accept to that, because really the contamination rate is one of the large drivers in that. We've recently done here in town a few things for that. You may have seen some literature come out in utility bills surrounding, hey, you know, quit bagging your recycling. That's considered trash, even though it's full of recyclables. And then our recycling centers really do not, they do not want any plastic bags, or your grocery bags and things of that nature, really get those out of your stream. And those are some of the things that, the way they separate the material, it just really causes them some headaches in the way they process their material. So those are a couple of easy things we've been able to try to do thus far and try to work on. There's a number of other things we would continue to try to do as well, perhaps some communities implement a tag. If you come to your home and it's contaminated, we put a tag on it and don't pick it up, let you call us, and we try to educate you on what you, what it is you need to do and not do. And then, like I said, that group with the folks represented from municipalities across Wake County have talked about trying to work together in a collaborative effort to put together a unified items we recycle, so that way minimize confusion if somebody's moving here from Raleigh or Wake Forest or somewhere else, that it's streamlined from the community they came to, so we're not necessarily having to re-educate every new resident.
We might be getting some additional education.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to, or have you already discussed the need to go back any time, say, well, I'm not, no sense in guessing at a time, are there any charges and arrears that we need to address?
We feel that January would be the best time to go back and look at it. That is when this new pricing went into effect, so we would suggest going back to at least January, if that's something the council desires to do, is, to help pay this cost.
I think it goes without saying, and I've, I've seen a few articles on this, that nobody's anticipating that there's not another international market that we can ship, ship this stuff to, and so the problem is going to continue to persist. It's not, nobody's expecting that it's a temporary thing, and then it's going to get better again. Is that right?
That is correct. We, we believe it, we, I would say we believe, we hope that it will level off and not continue to rise and, and kind of develop what I'd like to refer to as a new normal. And there's some things going on in the market that we hope will contribute to that. I think we're very fortunate in that some articles I saw last week, some communities in other states were actually suspending their recycling programs because the places where they took their material to are shutting down. They can no longer afford to operate. So fortunately, we're not, we're not in that place, and, but it is, it is a real, it is a real issue.
There've been some local stories also on some of the TV stations about it. One was Carrie, and said, no, we're not, gonna ask people not to recycle. They're gonna pay the charge, and whether the market opens up or not. What's interesting is, also, knowing how much you pick up, what'd you say, 135 tons?
About 100, I want to average about 135 tons of material a month.
A month. And that's not all of it.
No.
Not everybody recycles. And then that's, and mainly the people who live out in the county don't recycle, and there's a lot of rural counties in Colorado that don't recycle at all.
15 to 20 years ago, it was a big item on the agenda that, about where was the next landfill going to be? And Holly Springs happened to be the winner of that lottery.
Yes.
And with, about the same time, or shortly thereafter, the issue of recycling began to take on a lot of prominence and popularity. We implemented it for a period of time, but what I do recall, and I think everybody else can recall, there's never been another discussion in the last 15 years on where's the next landfill going to be. And recycling, well, even though it may cost, uh, cost the town, say, on the order of $60,000 a year, is a small price to pay, spreading it through the residents as compared to buying the, finding the land, buying the land, going through all of the, the development charges, which will, or development timing, costs which could take literally decades, and then paying for that cost, because it's not going to be close by, you'll be hauling it to Timbuktu. This is the economical alternate, alternative to, uh, to, to regressing, and, and I don't think anybody is suggesting that, but it's the, it's, it is the preferred economic alternative to, instead of regressing, to, to filling up a landfill. Would you, would you concur with that, or have I got my math wrong?
Yeah, that's very correct. Good.
You need a motion for this? How, is, is the recommended motion and action is stated in the, in the agenda package? Is it that specifically what we need, Rodney?
Yes, I mean, what we're asking is first for your consideration and approval to start payments, looking at, starting with the January 2019 billings, and I guess we'll work with finance and the budget to figure out, you know, where the payments come from. I don't know if, if y'all had time to analyze that further. I don't know if Matt, Mr. Rohlenskin, can answer any of that?
Um, no, I mean, I think we're still gonna have to analyze what the impact is to the Public Works budget and to what degree, if any, that can be absorbed within their budget. But that's, that's something that we'll continue to review and bring to you as part of the third quarter review, like the other, other departments, that we're looking at what, you know, what kind of capacity they have towards the end of the year. One other thing I would add is, on the, on the surcharge amount, what we're proposing is that if it's within that $5 range, that was the historical trend, that that part is, is covered by All-Star, like they have, have been doing in the past, so that we would be paying if rates that, you know, if the market rate is above that historical norm, then the surcharge would kick in. Is that a fair way to describe it?
Yes. Thank you for that clarification.
And do we, do we have a fairly specific amount with a surcharge? I thought, Rodney, did you send something out to us a few weeks ago, proposing what that would be?
Well, it had gotten as much as $36 a ton for him to dispose of, but like we said, he's been covering the five.
Yes, and we've seen, I think, Tommy, I'll, I don't have the emails in front of me, so we'll recall from memory just for a moment. We sent an email Friday with, last month was around probably in the low 40, low 40s, 43. The one of the other months we looked at was around the 26. So it has a, it has a little bit of swing. As well, I say, the 3610 that he entered into a contract for was somewhat of a base rate, but they're really, they're breaking that load out. They're doing a sample load each month, recognizing that is a good picture of what we're typically bringing, and then pulling out.
Basically, a recycler receives a certain amount for each commodity.
So there's a, there's a process of cost to every ton that comes through the recycling facility, and then there's a revenue that they receive for each material. The price of cardboard and mixed paper has dramatically decreased as far as we're saying over the last two years, because China just refused to take all the United States material. So we're hoping, based on what we're talking with the recyclers, Waste Management, biggest waste and recycling provider in the world, that there are two or three new United States paper mills coming online in the next six to 18 months that will be starting to use this material. Therefore, hopefully, making that revenue go back up for the material they receive. So I was just sitting here looking at the chart for, and we've been sending this to Forrest and staff of the material, and it's interesting with Amazon coming. We, we've seen this in the last three years, the Amazon effect. More and more residents have cardboard because they're getting Amazon packages. Here in Garner, out of a ton, 27% is cardboard, generates $24 of revenue per ton. 25% is mixed paper. So over 50% of everything we bring is cardboard and paper. And mixed paper right now is only generating $11 per ton. It used to be in the $30, $40 range. So therefore, that's what's swung, swung the needle, so to speak. The other big one, of course, is aluminum, which is only 2% of the stream, but generates $20 of revenue per ton, because it's a more valuable commodity. So that's basically where we are.
Thank you.
And I mistakenly said it got up to 36 a ton, but it's actually 26. So we...
No, it's...
It was 26 in January. And I just got this today, I believe. February is actually 44.
Oh, okay. I was just going by the last...
So the cost, the processor cost charged, they charge every hauler that comes in, including their, their own hauling operation, $95 a ton to process. And then you subtract the revenue they receive, and then we have to make up the difference.
Tommy, is this...
In this motion, we, we just need to, what you have here is, I move that we pay a monthly, they'll be authorized staff to begin paying a monthly surcharge for recycling based on the actual cost on invoices received from All-Star Waste, retroactive January 1st of 2019.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, there were two items added to the agenda. Do you want to cover them now, or wait till the end of the agenda? Can't add one, Buck can add one.
I believe, were they closed session items?
Yeah, both of them were.
Yeah, both of those were.
All right, we'll be back. Manager's report.
Mr. Mayor, all I have is the Garner info that's in your packet. I don't have anything further. Well, the what? Oh, but that's, I'm gonna cover that during the council, council reports, since it's a council item, not really a manager's item. Did you, did I leave something else?
Those committee reports on the agenda, I just want to make sure, when we got to that section, we had a, just a reminder.
And we're there, so let's do it. Committee reports. Mr. Mayor, the Law and Finance Committee met with their town attorney, and I think everyone received some information relative to, to that discussion. So unless anybody has any questions, I think the report that was submitted essentially speaks for itself.
Uh, Bill, would you care to enlighten us a little bit? You hit the highlights, so that, I think you said this is the kind of stuff that could be talked about in public session, or needed to be, but there's about six different memos that came out on one, on one email that we got that are, and they, and I proposed change Is the change going to $7,000 a month, or is it $14,000 a month, or what, what is it that's being recommended?
The, the basic thing here is that beginning about July 1, the, the amount of legal services rendered has skyrocketed with all these projects we're in. And we went from basically an average of 63 hours a month for January through June of last year, to 93 hours a month for July through, through January. And the trend continued on the February bill in that same range. And so what the committee recommended was a retroactive payment for the difference during the seven months, July through January, and a change in the monthly retainer payment from 7,000 to 10,000, from, you know, whenever it goes into effect through the end of the fiscal year.
So we're going, we need to, we need to do a true-up for past work through January?
That was, that was, that was part of the recommendation. The other was an, an increase in the, the monthly payments from here on out.
Was that 49?
Right, right.
What action do we need to take on that?
Well, I would, I would recommend that the council acknowledge the substantially increase in hours and approve the recommendation to do what I'd call a one-time or lump sum catch-up payment of $49,000, and then approve an additional payment for the remaining months of this fiscal year of $3,000. The current retainer is 7,000, so that would be effective only from, from now through the end of this budget cycle.
February, February charges through...
Through, through June, yes.
So it goes from 7 to 10?
Yes, yes. And that's based essentially, I think, on Mr. Anderson's expectation that there's not going to be any substantial reduction back to what one might consider to be a normal amount of hours. I'm sure you probably looked at the most recent information he submitted, and for the current month, the hours are 96.32. So they're far beyond what the original contract called for in the range of 50 hours.
Bill, in one of the memos you produced, there was some comparisons with area towns, and where it was arranging, it was ranging from hours was low of just under $3 per population to some of them that were going as high as $12 per population. You're not proposing a change in the way you charge, you're still by how many hours you put in and at, at a certain rate per hour.
Right.
Right.
And, and now it's, it's estimated then that, that the ten thousand a month will take care of us and that, and this contract submitted through, um, June of this year. Did you make that in a motion?
I did.
Second.
Motion made and second. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Hall opposed.
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I may, to add to that, um, the attorney's salary has not been, um, discussed or addressed or adjusted probably ten or twelve years. Currently not out of line to raise the salary.
If, and if you want to, and following what, what Miss Behringer said, could look online at some other towns that their legal budget have done it. It'll get your attention. I'm talking about towns our size.
Okay, any more?
Committee before question, there's a Public Works Committee Wednesday at nine-thirty?
Yes, sir.
Nine-thirty until we get finished, right?
Sorry?
Nine-thirty until we get finished.
Yes, sir.
You got an appointment, go somewhere?
We scheduled nine-thirty to eleven, but we can go until needed, and there will be an agenda that goes out to committee members tomorrow with backup information or background information on two of the items.
Want to confirm? I put nine-thirty to eleven-thirty because I figured out, eleven to eleven-thirty is what we're looking for. Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to confirm, I got it, my fine.
To just conclude, committee reports. Let's go to manager's reports.
I'm, I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Attorney reports.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Council reports, we will start with Mr. Marshman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just probably one item I was gonna, I couldn't remember if, if we, uh, mentioned what I consider to be very good news from the last, uh, campo meeting where the, uh, the, the lab funds that, uh, we had requested for the, uh, for the White Oak Heavens Church area, those, uh, those were approved at the last meeting, uh, that, those are matching funds. John would have to tell me what, what the percentage matches are, but at any rate, um, that's good news. Um, and I couldn't remember if we had discussed that further or not. Uh, beyond that, um, I'll defer to our further discussion regarding, uh, applications to take place a little later.
One item, sir, the, uh, detention pond on West Garner Road in front of the G-PAC has, once again, it looks like perhaps the outflow's not working.
It's, there's a design flaw in the way it was built, and so we're working with the contractor to get that rectified. It's not gonna be an easy, easy fix.
Oh, I, I believe that, but if we continue to have rain like we're having, it's gonna overflow.
Yeah.
We can encourage them a little bit more to get it done a little quicker.
Right.
Second one, Miss Behringer said regarding to that. Sorry I was tardy due to work and due to time, uh, just changed shirts, work shirts and came here straight, so I'm sorry I'm not dressed in the proper attire, but at least I got a Garner shirt on, but anyway, sorry, it's just the way it works and I was a busy Monday and just the way it works. So I apologize. That's all for now.
Mr. Kennedy?
I can't find a email I sent to Rodney, so I'll, thank you. And you, um, have you got any, after the, uh, construction progress meeting, is, do we have a new completion date on the rec center?
Yeah, the last meeting I attended, uh, was it last week or the week before that? The completion date of the actual building, I think, still stayed at March, the end of March. Um, however, the, uh, some of the roadwork, I think, is not slated to be complete until June. Um, as you know, you, they, they will not be able to restart the roadwork until, uh, March, probably mid-March, based on DOT, uh, regulations, so, uh, that is probably gonna take a little while. Uh, as far as a complete project, because it's all under one project, they're not separate. So the building, you know, will be finished before the roadwork potentially will be.
We intend that, we're not gonna, do we intend to occupy the building before the project overall is complete?
I think the plan right now is not to occupy, um, but that's, I guess that remains to be discussed, just depend, when you say occupy, we might get move some, some furnishings or fixtures in, but as far as operating, uh, I think the plan is that we might need to have those, um, road improvements done before we actually move in and start operating.
So it's, it's way too early to talk about any plans for an opening?
Well, the plan for the opening will be similar to what we did here at Town Hall. We'll wanna get in there and, uh, you know, work out the kinks, get it all set up the way we want, and then shortly after we move in, we'll have a grand opening and an open house and, um, you know, some festivities surrounded around the grand opening. But that will occur after we've been in and probably had it up and running for a little bit. And I'm talking about just a matter of weeks or a month or something, but.
For the contract, for the roadwork and the parking, and of course also the expansion, the parking at the G-PAC, that's all tied together.
It's all tied together as one permit.
So we couldn't give them the parking lot first if they, they're gonna do it based off what they, how they, I'm just seeing, that's the way you could, you could use.
Is there, I think there's a new contractor for that work now?
They have, they have separate contractors for the site work and for the roadwork, and so they're trying to work out schedules with, with both of those. But it's not, it's not necessarily that it's do the parking lot or the roadwork first. We, we expect that work to be happening simultaneously with multiple contractors. I think right now they're trying to work out schedules with them and work around the, the wet conditions we've had.
Could we work out a time to, uh, to, to, to look at it again, or I'd like to see how?
Sure, we can do that. And just to give you an update on that, I went through there last week, and, uh, the hardwood flooring is down on all three floors. Uh, they started putting down, I believe, some of the flooring in some of the multipurpose areas. Um, a lot of the painting and, of course, the wall coverings are, are done, and they're putting in fixtures, lighting, a lot of the lighting's in, uh, plumbing fixtures, those type of things. So on the inside, it's starting to, you know, kinda look like it's coming together. We still gotta work out some things with the, uh, the flooring on the walking track and, and what the specs are for that, but for the most part, you know, there is some progress that, you know, if you went inside, you can see. Uh, and even the new site, uh, contractor has started doing some, uh, grading, some of the final grades on the outside. Uh, we still gotta work out a few things with the elevation and the ADA compliance and those type of things, but other than that, um, it's, it's coming along, but not, not as fast as we would like.
So regards to the wooden floor, Rodney, they've installed them, but are they finished? Have they finished, uh, are they striped, do they have the top coat, or they waiting till they get further along before they do that?
The last time I went in, last week, it was, it was, had not been sanded all the way. They sanded and finished where the bleachers go, but not the middle of the floor, and, you know, I wasn't here at the end of last week, so I'm not sure.
I think they completed the sanding Friday or substantially completed the sanding on Friday, but, um, all, all three floors were, were, um, close to completion on sanding.
But the heating, air conditioning system's already complete, right?
They don't need to put the decal down before they do any more coatings on the floor?
Hoping that the, uh, summer basketball leagues will be able to play in there, but I didn't like what's gonna happen now. They play in, uh.
Gonna be close depending on when they start.
In June, they play through July and, and the first week or two in August.
It's gonna be close.
So they get to finish where we're all living. Anyway, sorry.
Curiosity, uh, when they were sanding, has, has all the painting been, been completed inside?
Most of it has.
And did they, did they try to control, control the dust with the sanding?
Oh, yeah, they have a machine that has a vac, uh, system. They even have one they can ride on. I hadn't seen the sander that you can ride on, but for that size floor, and it, it does have a vacuum system that captures that dust. Um, I don't know what the efficiency is of it, but it captures a great amount of the dust. I was in there when they were sanding and it, it didn't bother me. Today I was in there.
Like the last time I was coming back, I was going by there about six forty, six forty-five, and the lights were on, you know, they did the murals on the wall a while back, and from that standpoint, it was good.
Yeah, the same, um, artist that did the mural on the side of the full bloom building did the murals in the walls of the, uh, the gyms. Yeah, I think two of the gyms have the murals.
Very, very simple, but it's very, uh, breaks up the big, uh, the big space of just a big white wall.
Yes.
Uh, anybody else got any comments on the rec center? If not, I'll go to the next item on the, my list. The, uh, when we had a, a preview of, uh, highlights of the, of the budget, um, I might have overlooked it, but is, it, is the budget going to address or reflect an increase in what we've been, uh, we've been talking about regarding resurfacing and street maintenance? I don't need to know the exact amount, I just need to know if that's gonna be addressed.
It will, and we did, um, we did put the full, um, the rest of the $5 vehicle fee toward that, so it will be, uh, increasing.
Uh, curiosity has got me. How about the, how's the phase one survey on the Yergin property? Has that begun?
It's begun, um, contracted with, uh, a consultant last week, and, uh, we got the questionnaire, so Bill and I will be working on the questionnaire, and, um, and then I guess in the, in the meantime, uh, the contractor consultant will be doing his part as far as the site survey and, uh, whatever other, you know, due diligence they need to do to get that complete. They indicated that it was about a three-week process, um, so hopefully it should be complete by the end of, um, this month and not really affect our schedule.
Okay.
To be complete in March, I mean, uh, April.
Um, is there any need to set aside any time on the agenda now or to say the next time, or can, does it need to wait longer to set aside a time to, uh, to go back and nail down the source of funding for the park site and, as well as the depot relocation? Or is it still too early to be doing that?
Uh, as far as the depot, uh, it's a little bit too early because we're still waiting for estimates, um, from contractors. That's been, been a little tough getting contractors to bid on that job, um, but I think it's maybe a little bit too early to decide because we don't really know what the, the number is yet. As far as the park site, uh, we presented information, uh, a couple of weeks ago and, you know, it's at the, the council's discretion, you know, how you wanna handle that. I mean, we could bring it back, you know, next meeting or work session, and you can decide how you wanna, how you wanna address that.
My main thought is, I just don't want us to hold up when it's time to, to go. We, you, you got, what, in my, my thought is, is that when you go to the closing, you can't tell them how you're gonna pay for it.
Right.
You're gonna have to present money.
Yeah, and the plan is for, you know, if we stay on schedule, is that we would have the purchase complete by the end of April. So if we wanna try to stay on that, we're gonna have to make some decisions pretty quick.
I'd suggest coming back to us next time with the plan, whether we do it next time or, but have a, have a time planned for it. Um, dialing the clock back a little bit, when, I think it was S.T. Wooton that came to us about, uh, developing a concrete and asphalt plant east of forty. I know we had some informal discussions with them about the existing concrete plant, the one that's been there since before we were born, I suppose, um, just outside the downtown area. Has, has anybody come forth with, with, uh, and I'm not sure who owns it, but is it, will, will, will the new concrete and asphalt plant, will it displace the old one? Totally different owners?
Right.
And the new plant is being put in place just for the highway. I'm not sure if it's gonna stay after the highway construction or, or not. Does anyone?
The existing plant has been there so long that if they move, it's like, I think, how, think how long it's been there with all those trucks. I think, think about the, uh, first, the railroad probably wouldn't ever let them do it again. Secondly, think about the environmental cleanup you're gonna have if they move.
Well, I think you're referring to the one off of Garner Road on the, right near the overpass.
No, he's talking about the new, I'm talking, he's talking about the existing one, which he's referring to is the one across from the Yergin property, whereas the, the concrete, that's the ready-mix concrete plant, that's a different. And, and again, I don't think you can see that happen anytime soon because somebody's gonna have to be responsible for the environment or cleanup if they leave.
There's another site closer to the forty, though, across from where the old, um, Spectrum or Tom Warner.
Yes.
Tower.
That's the new one Mr. Kennedy's referring to, I believe.
No, across the street.
Oh, oh, okay.
There's one down the.
Asphalt plant, gray, gray asphalt, that's what it used to be, the other side of the quarry.
No, there's actually a.
That's right, there's one right across from there, that side, Dawson's Middle School, that's correct. And that was S.T. Wooton, one also, I believe, was, yes.
That's, okay, yes. That's what confused me because that's the S.T. Wooton also.
To Mr. Kennedy's point, or the, the one that is being, uh, constructed for the I-40 improvement, I, I guess I was of the impression that after that work is done, that one possibly will, will, what's the term I'm looking for?
Go away.
Good enough, yeah, go away, I guess. Or is there a possibility it would stay in operation?
I don't know, I, I, I was more interested in the old one that's on the south side of the road across from the Yergin property and trying to determine if, if there was any connection between them and the new one, and y'all have cleared that up, there is not. And it is an older site, and the older it gets, it's, there's more accumulation of material, and, and the one thing ultimately I, uh, that I'd love to address, since we're trying to address it, it through another avenue of, uh, cleaning up some, uh, some sites in Garner, is that there's, there's broken up concrete that I don't think is a part of the, is, that is stored on the old site now. And I don't think that's a part, I don't know that, how that's used in the, in creating new concrete, and I'm wondering if we could ask them to, uh, consider just cleaning that up and trying to get it off sites just unsightly, unless y'all would prefer just to leave it, just to let that sleeping dog lie. Wonderful.
Well, I, I agree with that. I mean, I, I don't know what they would say in terms of.
It's, it's just a pile, just, uh, looks like several dump trucks or, or more than that. It, it just, it's a difficult site. You, it, it's hard to make a concrete plant and an asphalt plant look beautiful. Let's just face it, that, that you, that, that, we can't, we can't ask for so much. If they could just remove rubble, debris, that would be helpful. I'd hope that's not too much to ask of them. And with that, that's all I have for tonight.
Anybody else have anything?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, under this, uh, council reports, we had, um, committed to, uh, receive your tally on the, uh, council seat and to also, um, present you with that information. Um, I think the key questions are, um, as I pass these around, what method do you wanna use for selection, and if you're gonna interview, how many would you like to interview? So those are basically a couple of things to start with. And the town attorney can chime in on this as appropriate, but, uh, two methods you could do, of course, you talked about doing interviews, uh, but with that, you can then do, um, a motion and a vote in open setting here, and in that case, if there's a tie, the mayor would break the tie, or you can choose to do a nomination and ballot where you would write it, I guess, on a slip of paper, and in that case, the mayor would not break the tie. If there was a tie, you would just continue to, um, bring forth nominations until the tie has been broken. So this is the.
First thing we need to do is decide how many that we may choose to interview.
Yes.
And then, uh, and I think that, you know, there's, there's three people, there's three, three candidates, three applicants, I rephrase that, who have gotten, uh, have all four of us agreed to, and then you have one who had three. So, uh, I think that what, the way you should consider is you're gonna either interview three or four people. I would, I would say that, uh, looking at the, who we have, I would interview four people. The three, the, the top four vote-getters, uh, I think should be the, the, uh, the four people we should interview. I was just throwing it out there, because you've got three with four votes and one with three votes.
I could, uh, I could agree with that, Mr. Singleton. I think we ought to give deference to the, uh, to the highest nominees, if you will, the highest vote-getters, and, uh, I think interviewing, uh, four individuals based on this tally would be, uh, would be suitable.
Okay, so this, I would agree. So this is public information, do we, it is, how, how does, how is this to be disseminated to the public, and since the public is in session tonight, is do, uh, you wanna read that information?
Yeah, I was gonna volunteer to do that. Yeah, I was gonna volunteer to do that, but is that your discretion? If you want me to read what the vote tally was, and then we can talk about who the, the four highest...
I, I would just disclose the top four vote getters.
Okay, all right, top four votes.
These are in alphabetical order.
In alphabetical order, okay. Oh, they're already in alphabetical order, okay.
The digits on the ball.
Yeah, Damian Dellinger, I hope I'm pronouncing that correct, Joseph Keller, Mona Parks, and Elmo Vance will be contacted to go further on in the process.
Okay, so we need to look next at, looking at, I think we decided last time we should at least, we can't ask them to come in, you know, soon, we need to look at dates a couple weeks out, maybe a morning date, maybe afternoon to fit, fit their schedules, or, you know, where they may be available. And we also need to also consider, I know we, we work on the questions, but we need to say, are we gonna interview them for 30 minutes, or any of the candidates for 45 minutes, or how much space do we want to give? 30 is a minimum, I don't think that we'd at least do 30 minutes.
I was gonna say 45, in my view, would be, would be adequate with the information we already have on them, yeah.
Do we interview them individually?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I would recommend.
But that's still to be done, I understand, in a public setting?
That's what he said. I think it would be appropriate to ask applicants who are not being interviewed to, to, to wait in an ante room or outside while others are being interviewed.
A special call session, date that fits your schedule and figures.
Let's, let's look at those days, and y'all go ahead, those who have the weeks, and y'all are gone out of town, y'all go ahead and lay them out there, so we know what we're looking at.
I will be out of town tomorrow, the March 5th through March 12th, and then I'll be out of town again on April 1st and 2nd.
I will not be available the week of March the 10th.
Okay, well, that leaves the last, the last two weeks in March, then. Oh, my gosh, we've come to some time, we might be able to work. Kat, you said through March 12th, right? But you're through the 10th, you said the 17th.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, so the last two weeks in March, look like they made some possibilities. Now, we do have a meeting on the 19th, I don't know if we wanna do that, but we'll do it before, I don't, I just respectfully ask, we don't do on Monday, or I prefer Mondays take Monday.
Or Mondays, you say.
Not, not to do a Monday, Friday, if we could, we do a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday would work better with my work schedule, but I'll, we got something already planned on the 22nd, employee breakfast, I don't think we're gonna do anything that day.
Well, we got to work on some questions before we have the interviews.
True, well, we've got two weeks to whip them up.
And we've got, we've got the night, the night of the 19th to solidify them, or maybe we can do it by, through email before then.
Okay, so...
I'd say let's point to the 19th as the night to finalize it. Is, is that what you're proposing?
Yeah, but I think we'd better, that would be fine, have it done, but then, but we'd better be contacting these folks, these, these applicants, and getting them on our schedule, or making sure there's a time that we can meet with them. Should we go ahead and try to schedule it, the, sometime the 20th, 21st, or 22nd, or...
Well, 22nd, we've got a employee breakfast, I don't think we'll do that day. I would say let's look at the 20th, 21st, or 27th, 28th, best, focus on, pick two of them, and see if they're available on the 20th and 21st.
I, I, I think, I think the, maybe the, the latter week in March would give us a little more flexibility to pin down our, our questions and to send out notices to make sure they're available.
That's two weeks to get questions, and that's two weeks from tomorrow. To be sure, we can come up with 10 questions between nine, three weeks.
Well, I'm, I'm not suggesting we need all that time for questions, Mr. Singleton.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm, to be sure, let's get the ball rolling, and we don't need to, good gosh, we're gonna be interviewing in April, what, heck, we had the budget done before we get it done. I'm just, I mean, this is the way you got to set up something, pick a day, and let's pick it, okay? We're gonna do it, ask the 20th and 21st. We can have the questions finalized by the, before the meeting on the 19th, and we can make sure we all agree with them on the evening of the 19th at our meeting, and then we can hopefully proceed with the interviews on the 20th and 21st.
I'll, I'll recommend the 21st, then.
Well, if the candidates can come on the 20th and not the 21st, that's why I say you pick two days, you don't pick one day, 'cause you got four people working on their schedules.
I have a commitment the morning of the 21st.
Well, we shoot for the morning of the 21st, and have two or three slots, and then shoot for the afternoon of the 20, excuse me, the 20th, and then afternoon of the 21st, a couple slots, and see what works best with the candidates.
Sounds good.
You say the afternoon of both days or the morning, morning of the 20th?
Morning of the 20th, and then Mr. Barron tried something on the 21st, I believe, in the morning, and shoot for the afternoon of the 21st.
Take it with me. Set time slots and let somebody pick them.
Yes.
Or let the candidates pick them.
Are you willing to do afternoon on either days? And, and I'll be a little selfish, I usually have several volunteer things that obviously I can step aside from on the, on the mornings, Wednesday mornings, but...
Afternoons, if that's fine, I mean, we're saying afternoons now, we're saying like, after like, 2:00 to 3:00, 3:00 to 4:00, 4:00 to 5:00, something like that's what we're talking. I mean, if we're talking 45 minutes, or we're gonna take hour slots, I'm assuming, roughly.
Anytime after 12, 1 o'clock.
After 1:00, that's, that's if you get through.
Afternoons of both days, then, is that what?
That, that's, that's what I would prefer.
One at 2:00 and one at 3:00 and...
One at 4:00. Just choose them, just in case somebody couldn't come the next day. I'd hate to say, well, there's only two slots, and you got four people, and first come, first served. I mean, we could do all four in a row, suit me fine, and you, you've got them done. Doesn't bother me.
But you'll, what if it worked out, we could do all four on Friday, I mean, that Wednesday afternoon, 2, 1:30, 2:30, 3:30, 4:30?
Sound like a winner to me.
We could try that, and then we, and then the next afternoon's the fallback.
Okay, sounds good.
Good with that, yeah. 1:30, but start?
Yeah, I was just, just thinking, just to be out of here by reasonable terms.
Rodney, what does it sound like, ye?
I think that'll work. We'll look at room availability, we shouldn't have, well, I guess they may be in here, I guess, but we will, we'll make that work. And we, you want staff to be in charge of contacting the applicants, or would you like to appoint someone here?
Staff do it.
Staff, staff. But this is a, a large setting here, and could we do it in the council chambers from, it's much more, you know, conference room, it's much more...
Intimate, intimate.
Yeah, it'd be...
This is kinda airy. I mean, it is, this is kinda large in space, you're talking about a little more...
Yeah, it has to be an open meeting, so we have to figure out how we accommodate...
How about the training room upstairs?
Training room, that's much smaller. We don't have the seating where we can play ball.
But it's big enough if some public comes.
We can make it half the size that it is, too.
Yeah, you can pull the tissue across and make it smaller.
Sounds good, yes, yeah.
And provide seating for 15, for the audience, if anybody's so interested. Now, just a clarification before we go any, go too far down the road, even though the audience may be there, this is an interview conducted by the council.
No questions?
No, no input from the...
Somebody cannot be quiet, and they're asked to be quiet, and they're warned again to not be quiet, we'll have to ask them to leave. I don't think that's gonna be a problem, I don't think.
I'd, I'd be surprised if we have people there.
Do, do we wanna take that a step further, or just get to that step? And I, and what I'm talking about is, after the interviews have been completed, then the process for getting to the nominee, seems to me, we need to be clear on that. After the interviews, would, would, would potentially each council member state or make a vote of, of a candidate, and then we see if, how the votes fall, or, I'm just, I'm, I'm just wanting to kinda make sure how we're gonna proceed from there. Or if you wanna wait, we can discuss it, I guess, later.
Have to vote the same night, same day, or?
I would hope that we would sit there and the interview, absorb it all, and then that time say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna have either the night ballot nomination, or we're gonna make a motion from the, from the council, and do it at the April 1st meeting in April, I'm assuming.
How about the work session the following week? Or do you want to do it on a, on a TV night?
Do it on a TV night.
Okay.
Might be a good idea if y'all would go ahead and decide now if you're gonna do the motion and vote, or the nomination and ballot, and just go ahead and have that nailed down.
Motion and vote versus ballot.
Motion, vote, silent, wait.
Is it motion and vote, yeah?
That's silent, wait.
Good with that.
Okay, I'm gonna do it first meeting in April.
I won't be here.
You won't be here.
I would be gone April 1st and 2nd as well.
Okay, all right, we can do it at the work session, we can do it at the work session.
And as a general policy, you all do not, you know, take action matters at a work session, but that's not a law. You could do it, if you put it on the agenda.
That's what we can be.
Work session on the 26th.
26th, and then they'll be, they can be sworn in on the 1st.
Right, right.
And I think we can offer, if, if you want it to be televised, or some, you know, video, I mean, we could probably, we can arrange that, just for that, if you, if that's what you want, but I would need to check with Rick on that.
Well, I mean, if we want to be that formal about it, we can do it at the work session, and if, if the person is sworn in the first meeting in April, we can do it again for TV. How many times do judges, and these people get sworn in, Congress gets sworn in, about 10 times? And they do. Lots of TVs, lots of pictures, lots of family.
Depending upon which Bible you want to use. All right, so we, we're, we're shooting for the 20th, 20th and 21st for the interviews.
Hope for the 20th, we can get them all in, but...
And then we vote on the 26th with the objective of seating on the 1st.
If possible. Because we gotta remember, we might be seating someone who may have already had plans, they may be out of town with Miss Barron, or probably not, so, you know. I mean, really, they might be out of town, like you are.
Right, 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 right.
And, you know, we'll seat them when they're available to be seated. We'll shoot for April 1st.
That pretty well covered.
For my edification for a trip later on, but at any rate, what, what is the date of our work session in April? Is that the 23rd? Do you know, Ms. Gibson?
It is the 28th.
Third.
Excuse me, April, it is the 30th.
So our, our meeting, that would be the 16th?
The 16th would be the second meeting, yes. 'Cause the 1st begins on a Monday, so that kinda moves everything closer.
So, okay, so, so the week between the 16th and, up until the 30th, the 30th would be the work session?
Yes.
I'm, I'm needing to be away a little bit, and I'm trying to, I wanna work it around those schedules, so I had originally thought the work session might be on the 23rd, I guess, but if it's on the 30th...
The last Tuesday.
Okay.
Is that right?
That's correct, last Tuesday of the month, yes.
Move we go into closed session for purpose of personnel matter slash matters? Could you give us a citation?
GPS 1433811A6.
Order to what the attorney said.
And, well, yeah, I don't know if he wants to give a site.
He did.
Only the other manner.
1433811A6.
It's the same one.
Oh, okay, we, we have the same one, okay, that's good. All right. I got a motion on closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All vote. All right, it's going to be a rec session.
Yes, council was in closed session for two personnel matters, no action was taken. Mr. Mayor, move that we adjourn.
Aye.
Call in 2519.
Aye.